I'm going to call the regular council public hearing meeting to order. If I can have the adoption of the minutes, regular council land use.
Second.
All those in favor, pose, that is carried. Finance committee.
Move and be received for finance committee January 12th.
Second.
All those in favor, pose, carried.
Move recommendations be adopted.
Second.
All those in favor, posed, carried.
And I'll move the minutes of the public hearing for January 12th, 2015.
Second.
All those favor, opposed, carried. And this evening, may I, I'd like to alter the agenda, if I may, to bring forward R 008 corporate report dealing with climate action strategy.
I'll move that.
Oh, second.
Climate action.
Yeah. Implementation of the community climate action strategy. We don't have to keep staff here all evening. You deal with that report?
I'll move the recommendations.
I'll second your report.
Thank you.
I'll second that. Oh, you can second it.
Okay. Any speakers?
Could be.
Seeing none. It's a great report. Thank you for the update. I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, and that is carried. You may go home to your family. Delegation. Tonight we have Elizabeth Modell, Downtown Surrey BIA, and part of the Coalition for the Better Transit and Transportation, to provide information on their upcoming, on the upcoming plebiscite. We had a soft launch this morning as well with the Mayor's Council, so welcome, Elizabeth.
Thank you very much. Good evening, your worship, Mayor Hepner and esteemed members of council. It's good to be here representing the Better Transit and Transportation Coalition. I'd like to also recognize Walt Judas, who's here on behalf of the Coalition from Tourism Vancouver, but is also a Surrey resident and working on the tourism component as well. So congratulations on your soft launch today. It was an excellent job. You spoke, Mayor Hepner, you spoke extremely well, and we're very proud to have you as a co-chair on that, so thank you. So first of all, the Better Transit and Transportation Committee is the most important public decision that has been made in decades. It's a plebiscite from March to May, and we're here to help the Mayor's Council with their transportation and transit plan, obviously to fund the expanded transit and transportation throughout the region. So this is our pledge. One of the most important decisions facing Metro Vancouver for the next generation is a 2015 referendum on transit, transportation, goods and people movement. A positive outcome is a crucial step to expand transportation options, reduce pollution, improve the health of our communities, strengthen our economy, and make this a region more affordable place to live. So that's vital to who we are and what we're about. Now, our membership is really diverse. I have never sat at a table in my 30-plus years of working, I'll say it that way, with a more diverse group, and all committed to the same vision and focus. So it includes business and labor, environment, health, students, post-secondary educations. It truly is a membership of diverse people, all coming together for a common cause. Very heartwarming. Our purpose is to support, obviously, the dramatic improvements proposed by the Mayor's Council, and the most important thing is to encourage the engagement and to educate the people in transit and transportation. So our goal is, first of all, the education important, how, a component, because it is so important to our future, to support the Mayor's and all their media plans, their council plan, and the transportation plan overall. And as I mentioned, there's over 70 organizations have joined to date. We want to understand that the people of Metro Vancouver actually understand the real benefits of the plan, and of course, ultimately vote yes for it. So one of the reasons this started was the fact is, we all know Metro Vancouver is growing so rapidly, and with that rapid growth, as we look down the road, we're going to have over a million people coming here in the next 30 years. I mean, in Surrey alone, it's slated for 350,000 extra people, 230,000 jobs, and one of the most important things for the jobs and the economy and ourselves is to have people and the goods movement move forward. So it's really, really important that people understand the actual components of this plan, and they vote a yes vote. So our actions to date for the BTTC is our media relations. Obviously, we're recruiting more members to the Coalition. We're developing a communications plan and also a media plan that really mirrors the Mayor's Council as well. We're establishing a key leadership council, and these are key people in the region who can speak for their cities themselves and their organizations. They're high-profile people, and that will be unveiled, and they will speak to the positive outcome of a yes vote on this, on this plebiscite. Obviously, we're doing fundraising, and our big kickoff is scheduled for February 5th, which I'm going to pull up a little bit later on this slide presentation. So what are our key benefits to Surrey? Just highlighted, 27 kilometers of light rail transit network, upgrades and widening of major roads, new and extended B-lines, and I've listed those out so yourselves, which I'm sure you already know, but also the public get a chance to see what are the direct impacts for Surrey and south of the Fraser. 80% increase in night bus services. I'm sure our students will be happy to hear that, and parents as well. 30% in handy DART services, so important for those people who are disabled and unable to get around on their own, that we are taking care of our seniors as well. Improved, improvements to the frequent transit network, expansion on new corridors, and expanded coverage in our growing communities, and of course, a new Patello Bridge. So this is our media, our website, our Twitter. Actually, our Twitter account is wrong there. It's @voteyestransit. Facebook, media launch is 12 noon, Thursday, February 5th, at Simon Fraser University Segal Building in downtown Vancouver. Part of the reason why we're doing it at SFU is the fact that they have a dichotomy of campuses that are logistically difficult to get to, and so we thought it would be good to, to launch it at Simon Fraser University, who has a really vested interest in this, both from an educational standpoint and their student movement standpoint. So we vote all, we invite all of those people to attend who'd like to come to our media launch and find out a little bit more about us and who we are. And thank you very much. I really appreciate you listening to our presentation today, and, and further from that, we're here to support you and roll out the plan and do whatever we can for a yes vote here, south of the Fraser, and in To Langley as well, and educate the public.
Thank you. Any questions, councillors? Councillor Lefrake?
Thank you so much, Elizabeth. That was a great presentation. I just want to say, a yes vote is just so important for people who have shift work, who can't make it home at night, and 80% more buses at night is so important to Surrey. And any way that we can support your work, I'm happy to participate. It's just so important for our low-income people to have better bus service. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lefrake?
Councillor Vilmun? Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, very articulate, as usual. I just want to suggest that in your efforts to have people vote yes, you also remind them to vote right away when they receive their ballots, because one thing we've talked about is that they'll be receiving their ballots in the mail, and there's a two-month period of time in which they can vote. And all of us know, we often put things in the to-do file or in the recycling, so I think it's really important to emphasize, as soon as people receive their ballots, to take it very seriously and to put them back in the mail, because I would hate to see, you know, people that actually wanted to vote not be able to find that ballot or just lose track of time. So it's one of my suggestions for you.
Great suggestion, Councillor Vilmun. Goodness, appreciate that, absolutely. And thank you very much, Elizabeth, for taking on the leadership role of the Coalition, because with so many partners at the table, and we're very grateful for every single one of them in recognizing how important this is to the entire region, and particularly to the city of Surrey, because there are a lot of things in there that advantage Surrey, but for the whole region. I thought it was interesting today at the launch, and one of the examples that was used by one of the other mayors, that with a million more people coming, and an expectation of hundreds of thousands of more vehicles, that if you lined them up from UBC, the 600,000 cars you could expect with a million people, you could get all the way to Sault Ste. Marie. So we have to do something. We know it's urgent for our children and our grandchildren, and we're very proud to have you at the helm, because you've done such great work in our city already, so thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the public hearing portion of our agenda. Number one, Madam Clerk.
First bylaw is zoning amendment bylaw 18398. The address is 9061 164th Street. Applicants are Mandeev and Surrender Bing. The applicant is seeking to rezone the property from one-acre residential to half-acre residential in order to subdivide into two half-acre residential lots, which will front 164th Street in a panhandle configuration.
Thank you. I have four people registered to speak against. I have, first up, Nadine Hofas. Think I said that correctly?
Please forgive me, I normally run from public speaking, something I try and avoid.
May I just have you repeat your name and address for the clerk for the record, please?
Certainly. It's Nadine Hofas, 9082 163rd Street.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, yeah, this is very important to me, as my husband and I bought and built our home just right above the proposed development there, 21 years ago, and when we purchased our home, we definitely liked the fact that there was a one-acre buffer or swath going across 164th. We ourselves are on a half-acre lot, and really don't want that to change, and just the way that the homes will be positioned, it would bump the house pretty much right up within our view of our backyard. It would be sitting in our backyard there.
Are you in that pie-shaped lot to the west?
Exactly, yes, we are. Yes. Yeah. So, yeah, I just wanted that on record, that we are opposed to that, and I do worry about it changing the value of our property. And previous years, there was actually, where, let's see, just above where you're at there, the CD 15325B, at one point, that was proposed to be over 150 lots and homes, and we opposed that as well, and it came down significantly in numbers, and it's much better community, much better feel there. We would like to keep that feeling throughout our neighborhood.
And you're on half an acre?
We are.
So, and this is resoning to half an acre?
Yeah. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Next up, I have Irene Schreiber, or Syber.
Well, I'm pretty much like a Nadine, not a public speaker, but my property is going to be extremely affected, because I am directly behind the proposed rezoning property, and when I looked at the proposed rezoning, it seems to me that the house would be sitting just feet from my back fence, which would be totally, I would be looking at a back of a house. When we bought the property, we were told that this is a buffer zone between the agricultural and urban, and it would not be changing, and from what I understand now, some panhandles are being allowed in some, some areas, but that doesn't mean that this should be allowed in every area. I would not oppose a home on the one-acre property, but definitely to have a house backing onto my back fence would definitely bring down the value of my property, and I would not be looking forward to looking at someone's back windows, looking at me after 21 years of serenity.
Could I just have a, Madam Planner, a picture of where those houses are situated relative to the delegation?
Madam Mayor, this is the proposed subdivision. The existing house is quite close to the street, and the new home will be proposed at the rear of the lot, and there would be a minimum 25-foot setback from this western property line.
And that western property line is yours?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So that's basically what I have to say. I greatly oppose this, because it just doesn't make any sense. One-acre properties, when we bought it, now all of a sudden, someone is trying to change our lives because of their gain, so I oppose.
Thank you for your comments. Your address, please, for the record.
948 163rd Street. I would say the same thing. When we were buying, it was a buffer zone, one acres to the agricultural, and I would like to, so that thing will remain, because we all devalue the property, and we've added in the mind of, it'll be one-acre property behind us, before the agricultural land.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Mr. Noak.
Could I just say something, one more thing?
No, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor.
Your address for the record, please, Mr. Sammis.
9066 163rd Street. That is also the home that most prominently backs onto the proposed subdivision. I would just like to ask the city to consider the impact that a rezoning of this sort would have on the community. The panhandle lots adding two homes on what appears to be two lots is certainly not attractive to the eye. I would like to echo what the other residents also mentioned, is, you know, being the A1 zoning, they did understand. We did, we did understand originally purchasing into here that this, this buffer would remain, especially being across from the ALR. And I am aware that there had been previous submissions for rezoning of these four properties that do exist adjacent to this current rezoning, the two to the south and the one to the north, that did not pass. I would like to ask the city to consider, why would this be approved at this stage? And in addition to what the other residents also mentioned is, you know, I would oppose the encroachment on the property lines and the quiet enjoyment of time on the properties that we reside on. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Next one is zoning amendment bylaw 18400. The civic address is 1478 476th Avenue. Applicant is Dream Castle Homes Limited. The applicant is seeking to rezone the property from one-acre residential to single-family residential and single-family residential 12, in order to subdivide into four single-family lots, one RF and three RF 12s.
Thank you. I have one person, we have a letter on table, opposed to that rezoning, and I have no one signed up wishing to speak. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number two? First call? Deb? Anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? Okay, after you.
Deb Jack, Surrey Environmental Partners, 7680 143th Street. With regards to this particular site, I mention once again that we feel that $300 per tree in terms of replacement cost is inadequate, and we don't know what the size of the trees are, and we've taken the position for some years now, informally in our presentation to Finance Committee, that we think that the value of the tree should be greater, the wider, or the greater the diameter of the tree. Out of 25 trees that are significant, 24 are going to be lost, and this has considerably, considerable implications with regards to the city's tree canopy, and particularly, overall, and particularly for this area.
Thanks very much, Deb, for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? First call? Second call? Third and final call? Next bylaw, Madam Clerk.
Is zoning amendment bylaw 18401. The address, 13122 Number 10 Highway and 13143 56th Avenue. The applicants are Ladhar Development, Segver Sidhu, Pardeep and Karanjit Dalawal, Vincent and Helen Dingalas. The applicant is seeking to rezone the portion of the properties from one-acre residential to half-acre residential in order to create an 11-lot subdivision. In addition to, a development variance permit is being sought for the southern portion of 13143 56th Avenue, in order to reduce the minimum lot width of proposed lots 2 and 3.
I have no one wishing to speak to this bylaw. I have one person signed up against the bylaw. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number three? Please come to the mic and give your name and address for the record.
My name is Lori Joyce. I'm with HY Engineering, here on behalf of the owner applicant for the project. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. As you are aware, our proposal includes 11 half-acre residential lots in the Panorama Ridge area. HY Engineering has been involved in a number of developments in this neighborhood, and we are very familiar with the area. We've been working with city staff for quite some time on this application in order to create a cohesive and efficient layout, and also to address preliminary servicing constraints, landscaping buffers, and onsite trees. Tree retention has been a major focus for this development, and we have worked very closely with a project arborist and design consultant to limit the house locations of the future lots in order to retain a significant amount of high-value trees. We've been advised by city staff that the West Panorama Ridge Rate Pairs Association has been provided with all of the necessary information related to the application, and the questions and concerns that were raised by the rate pairs have been answered and addressed. We believe our proposal is in keeping with the existing development within the neighborhood, and will also be a positive contribution to the area. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? First call? Second call? Third and final call? Next bylaw, Madam Clerk.
Is zoning amendment bylaw number 18402. The address is 14925 60th Avenue. The applicant is Gray Rose Developments Limited. The applicant is seeking to amend comprehensive development bylaw number 17423, in order to permit the development of six townhouses with six small commercial units on the ground floor.
I have no one signed up wishing to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to bylaw number four? First call? Second call? Third and final call? Next bylaw, Madam Clerk.
Is zoning amendment bylaw 18399. The civic address is 18818 71st Avenue. The applicant is 0910638 VC Limited. Applicant is seeking to amend comprehensive development bylaw number 17377, in order to allow one unenclosed tandem parking space for nine street-fronting units and increase the density and lot coverage of a recently approved 18-unit townhouse development.
I have no one signed up wishing to speak directly to this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number 18399? Number five. Name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Mike Bowler. Address is 17286 64A Avenue. I am the president of the Cloverdale Community Association. Just wanted to start with this project here. This project almost gave me a heart attack today when I saw it.
We wouldn't want that, Mr. Bowler.
Yeah. Talking about increasing densification here, oh my God. So just reading over the documents here, Madam Mayor and Council, this project is already 100% tandem, and for the developer to come back and say now they want to amend it to reduce one of the enclosed tandem parking spots and put it outside, is not acceptable to the association and the community. And the major reason for that is because we now eliminate the one guest parking that we had on the driveway that was behind that garage. So not only do we have limited visitor parking onsite, which is 0.2 for each dwelling unit, we just eliminated an additional visitor parking that we could have potentially used. So now, having said that, now you're using the street parking. Street parking is already being used in that one area. 188 is such a busy road, it, parking is as limited as it is, and there's no reason to increase parking issues by eliminating that one extra parking stall that we had, even though that pad, that pad on the driveway that was supposedly used as a sort of a parallel parking, if you, as a third spot, now that's going to be eliminated by increasing this additional parking space, or reducing that parking space. And going to page four of, of appendix three there, the developer states, or the planning department states, that they want to correct the lot coverage from 37% to 41%, yet the developer wants to increase the coverage, lot coverage, from 37% to 41%. So I'm confused here, as what is it, what are we trying to do here? What are we trying to accomplish? Because the densification is already there. And that was one question, Madam Mayor, and besides the parking issues, I mean, the developer wanted to put in a flex room at the front. That flex room, I mean, if he doesn't have that, I mean, it's not going to be a make or break to the way we see it as an association, because, again, we have two parking spots inside the garage. The one outside will not get utilized. We know that for a fact. Nothing outside gets utilized by homeowners. It gets pushed onto the street, and then they use that parking spot for the guests then. So at the end of the day, we're defeating the whole purpose of parking here. So Madam Mayor, if you could possibly confirm what planning is asking for here when it comes to the percentages for the lot coverage on page four of the appendix three?
Let's see if we can get that answered for you, Mr. Bowler. Madam Planner?
Madam Mayor, the applicant's requesting an increase in the lot coverage for, for this portion of the site from 37% to 41%.
Five percent.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. But at one point in, on page, let me see here, I've got everything highlighted here, so I'm, on page four of the actual planning report, bullet number, third one from the bottom up, states there, "An increase to lot coverage from 37% to 41% is also proposed to correct a calculation error in the initial development." So was the initial development already 41%? And now you're still asking for 41%?
Madam Planner?
Madam Mayor, it's, it's my understanding that, yes, the original proposal should have read 41%, and so we're correcting that figure.
It's our housekeeping correction.
Right. So as you can see, the densification is already there then. 41% densification is already there, and we want to increase it according to this amendment today that they're proposing here. So Madam Mayor, I, the association would like to see this amendment rejected, sent back, and leave it as is, because I think they've already succeeded with getting 100% tandem, which is something that the association will not support anymore, especially in the Clayton area. And last but not least, on page five of the planning report, there was a pre-notification sent out. Our association has been very active for the last number of years prior to me becoming president. Back in 2012, when the original project was developed, was proposed and approved by council, the, the association did not receive a notification letter. council, the, the association did not receive a notification letter. It was confirmed today by planning staff that no notification was sent out. We must make one thing clear, that Clayton still falls under Cloverdale, and the Cloverdale Community Association still holds jurisdiction over it. So, having said that, okay, great, 2012, nothing happened. But on October 8th, on page 5, they state here that another notification was sent out, and again, we were not notified. So today, I'm here to express my concern with this, because the document that planning staff used to, to follow, to advise our, our developers, is dated October 2006. It is pretty much outdated, because it never makes any reference to emailing. It never makes any reference to how the developer is held accountable to say that he actually, he or she did submit a notification to us. We had one case where the developer said, "I sent it out," and we never got it. Today, we all use tablets, smartphones. I think it'd be fair to say that emailing should be included as a part of a process as well, just to, so everybody covers their, their actions and whatnot. But then again, we also got the 100 meters location where they have to submit the, where they have to send the notifications out. And as you're aware, the last few public hearings I've been at, a lot of the associations have asked for that to be changed or updated. Maybe now's the opportunity for Mayor and Council to do that update. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mike. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number 18399? Anyone else after this gentleman? You, sir, will be the final speaker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Mache Dembeck from Barnett Dembeck Architects, here on behalf of the applicant. I just want to clarify some confusion about the coverage. Coverage is a very specifically defined term in the Surrey zoning bylaw. And when you move porch columns outwards or inwards, it increases, decreases coverage. In the process of doing the original bylaw on this site, we omitted calculating the coverage properly. So what we're proposing now is to make sure that we are indeed in, in line with the proposed building form with the coverage. What we're doing with this application specifically doesn't change the exterior form or, or coverage of the buildings that are already approved at, at this time. What we are specifically doing is trying to get an extra flex room in the downstairs portion of the units that are right along 188 Street. Yes, like the previous person said, these are all tandem style parking arrangement. And yes, it will remain exactly the same. So we're not really changing that overall issue with respect to this particular bylaw. And we're not amending that, really. The tandem arrangement remains. I hope that clarifies what's going on here, and that we can proceed.
I have a couple of questions, so it's not particularly clear yet. Counselor Hayne?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. You said that this isn't going to change the form of the dwellings, but then you immediately said this is going to be able to add a, a front living space room. And I, planning had said in the, in their recommendations in the report that it would put eyes on the street and so on. So I'm not, I'm not against having that room there and having that sort of streetscape, but I'm, but does this actually add a room that you didn't have on those plans before? Or is it the same?
Yes, it does add a room, where we used to have an indoor tandem garage arrangement. We now have a single garage with the added room behind that, and the tandem stall on the outside on the driveway. In the previous, in the current bylaw on the property, we do not call, we do not include the driveway on the site plan. And perhaps if Madam Planner could put up the site plan, that would help to illustrate this. You'll see on the, on the two buildings along 188 Street, there's a long, long driveway where we show parking arrangement. And you can see there's a single garage inside the unit that's outlined in front of that, behind that tandem, exterior tandem arrangement. So the rest of the interior of the dwelling unit on that level has now become an interior space for the unit itself.
Right. But if I may, Madam, that doesn't put eyes on the street, because you've got a garage right in front of it?
Eyes on the other side, on 188.
On the other side. Okay. But not to the, okay.
No. There are two floors of living level above this particular site plan.
Got it. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Gill.
It's again, that there is absolutely no net loss of existing parking. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Yes?
So the existing parking that was, the, the piece in front where there were going to be two interior tandems, was there room on that apron outside for another vehicle? So that there now will be one tandem, a flex room, and that place that was taken up for a potential visitor parking, let's call it, is now going to be the second tandem?
That is indeed the case. But we never, ever included that in our parking calculations to begin with, because on one of the buildings, it didn't actually meet the survey requirements for the length of a parking stall, which is pretty minor, though. And on the other hand, it is a tandem arrangement. You would never use that, say, for visitor parking officially, because it's specific to a unit, not for the site.
Okay. Thank you.
So overall, we meet the parking requirements, and that is unchanged.
It meets the parking requirements. Thank you very much for your comments. Counselor Gill?
In terms of the garage itself, is the garage standard size, or has it been somewhat shrunk?
No, no, it's standard size. It meets minimum requirements. It's acceptable in those terms. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes the public hearing portion of our meeting. Moving on to our committee reports, transportation and infrastructure. Seconder?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Recommendations be adopted.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Public Art Advisory Committee?
I'll move the receipt of the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the minutes for the Culture Development Advisory Committee, November 18.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move events to be received, Transportation and Infrastructure, November 24.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the Parks Recreation and Sport Tourism Committee, minutes of January 21.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And move recommendations be adopted.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move minutes to be received from Board of Variants, November 12.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move minutes to be received, Surrey Heritage Advisory Commission, November 6, 2014.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Moving on to the mayor's report. Toastmasters Month, February 2015, whereas since 1924, Toastmasters has been helping people become better leaders and communicators. And whereas 2015 is the year celebrating 90 years of the nonprofit education organization with over 320,000 members and 15,000 clubs worldwide in 126 countries. And whereas, the ability to speak clearly and effectively is a powerful and important skill that can help individuals overcome barriers to effective performance in virtually every endeavor and line of work. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Lynda Hepner, do hereby declare February 2015 as Toastmasters Month in the city of Surrey. International Mother Language Tongue, or Language Day, February 21, whereas a mother language is the first spoken language of any individual, and so is often the principal basis of their sociolinguistic identity that passed from one generation to the next. And whereas, the Mother Language Festival is a celebration of all mother languages, creating a legacy for all mother, mother language speakers that will last for generations, and a social link between individuals and groups. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Lynda Hepner, do hereby declare February 21, 2015 as International Mother Language Day, to celebrate the Mother Language Festival in the city of Surrey. This is also Provincial Eating Disorder Awareness Week, which I announced some at the last meeting. And the Provincial Eating Disorders Awareness Campaign is province-wide, and on Friday, February 6th, we can all be united in showing our support for this campaign by wearing the color purple. The lights in the plaza in front of City Hall will be lit with purple on Friday in support of the Provincial Eating Disorders Awareness Campaign. Moving on to governmental reports, I should report that tomorrow I leave for Toronto for the Big City Mayor's Caucus by, with respect to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, and will be gone for a couple of days with those meetings. So looking forward to that, and that's my first opportunity to meet with the other big city mayors across the nation. Moving on to corporate reports. R 008, we have done with respect to the Community Climate Action. Approval of sale, R 009.
Move the recommendation, second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move R 010.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. That's a sale of a road allowance?
Move R 011, Local Area Service, for sanitary sewer extension on 133 A Street.
Second.
577.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move R 012, the Board of Contract for the Anderson Creek Bridge.
Second.
And the King George widening. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the 2015 Salmon Habitat Restoration Program.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move R 014, the License Agreement with Ulster.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move R 015, the Truck Parking Status Update.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move R 016.
Counselor Gill, did you want to speak to that?
In terms of this particular report on truck parking, I just wanted to encourage staff, just a quick, friendly, perhaps, opportunity to look at expediting any requests, just given the demand for truck parking, and should we have any application, that we could look at either expediting the, the concept of whether it would be something that the city could approve, or, or work with the developer in terms of ensuring that that opportunity does materialize. So I just want to make sure that staff understand the importance of increasing the overall inventory in our city.
I think that's a common knowledge, that it's a, an ongoing issue for the region, and thank you for that, Counselor Gill. Next report, R 016, Metro Van Transportation Pleviceite Update.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor, opposed, carried. It's been a popular topic today. 017, the Contract Award for Traffic Control Devices.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Corporate Report, R 018, the Sanitary Sewer Servicing for the Highway 99 corridor in Sunnyside Heights and C P area.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Corporate Report, R 019, the Ministry of Environmental Discussion Paper for Site Profiles, Processes Identified in Potential Contamination Sites.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move R 020, the Increase of Taxi Licenses.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move R 021, the Boz Farm Park, I prefer Comset Plan, which we heard earlier this evening.
Second.
Yes, and that plan defined, I think it was option 2, that maintained the most natural elements of that plan. Did you wish to speak to it, Counselor Hayne?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say that, that a lot of work's been done by staff. A lot of work was also done by the developer directly to the north of that site to open up, to free up some more space for that park. And a lot of public consultation went on, and we had a great delegation to the Parks Committee last week, and again, this evening, talking about the natural areas of that park, and what a gem that's going to be, not only for the local residents right around there, but as a, as a regional attraction. So it's going to be a wonderful park when it opens. So congratulations to staff on that. Thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you, yes. Good work there. R 022, text amendments.
I'll move the recommendation.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Counselor Villain?
I just want some clarification on the Child Care Center Amendment. And I noticed it says that it's recommended the, that this use is permitted only as an accessory use to a residential use. So just for clarification, then, it's saying that the owner operator of the daycare needs to live in the house as a primary residence. Is that correct?
Madam Planner?
Madam Mayor, that's correct. There, there needs to be, the home needs to be used as a home with the childcare as accessory.
Because has there been a number of times arising that it's just been used as a daycare rather than as a residence?
Madam Mayor, I don't know if it's, if it's been a problem. There certainly have been questions of staff whether or not a person needs to live in the home, and so this is to make it more clear.
Okay. So there's a large demand for childcare, so I'm just sort of looking to not limit the ability to provide those spaces. I understand that, though. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your clarification, Madam Clerk. R 023, the Online Plumbing Permit, E-Government.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move R 024, Surrey School District Eligible School Site Proposals for 2014 to the 2018 capital plan.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. I think it's very good, and one of the first times, I believe, that we've actually actively commented on the capital plan for schools. So thank you for that from the staff. R 025, Surrey Local Immigration Partnership.
I'll move the recommendation, and I'd just like to speak to it as well.
Okay. May I have a second there? Put it on the table. Thank you. Counselor Villain?
Madam Mayor, this is an update on the Surrey Local Immigrant Partnership Table. And as you'll recall, our city received $600,000 to do a strategic plan to better locate and welcome and include new immigrants moving into our city. And I was elected chair along with Anita Hubbardman from the Board of Trade for this particular table, and we have all over 30 organizations, individuals participating. And we've also hired an extra person in our social policy department to help facilitate this table, because it is such an important issue, because by 2040, over 40% of the residents living in Surrey will be new immigrants. And we just want to make sure that we build capacity for that and utilize their skills. So we are, have been working with some federal direction, and I will say that the table is moving at a very fast pace with some very good results. And that Surrey and Vancouver are really taking the lead on this initiative, although 19 municipalities in British Columbia are participating. And to date, we have an immigrant advisory table put together with all already 19 representatives who are really letting us know who's living here, what their specific needs are, what job training is a possibility to utilize their skill. And I think that we've developed a website. There's going to be a newsletter that comes out, I think eight editions, to sort of profile what the table is doing, plus the new immigrants in our community. And we're doing a lot of research about what services are available, and to see how we can fill the gaps, to ensure that we're providing the services and letting people know that services are here in the city. And we've done some surveys to assess the community's perceptions about new immigrants, and how welcoming the city is. And I'm happy to say that really the new immigrants are feeling welcomed in our city, and feeling that we are outreach and welcoming them, but they do need more opportunities for job training. And I think that a lot of the information on targeting who is here and what services are here should be completed by the end of April 2015. And that the committee is, its goal is really to put a plan in place with very strong, clear recommendations on how we can move forward as a city in partnership with our nonprofit organizations, who are really helping to settle, and how the Board of Trade can get involved with businesses to ensure that there's apprenticeship opportunities for skill training, and how we can work with our universities. So it's a very new, important table for the city. I think it's one of the... I think it's one of the best things that we can be doing as a city from a social policy perspective, because it's our opportunity really to build a strong job base and strong family neighborhoods with people that are, are able to use their capacity in the city. And I know language is one of the barriers, so that we'll be looking at initiatives to help with the training as English is a second language as well.
Thank you for that update councillor Villanueva. It's an important partnership, and the report will be online for those who are interested in seeing more of it. So thank you for that. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Moving on to bylaws, number one. What is the wish of council?
I was wondering if I could ask staff a question on this delegation proposal, the application. I noticed there's three other properties in proximity and that are one acre properties. I want to clarify whether these one acre properties were considered the buffer with the farmland, and if this is a change that's going to be proposed on the other three properties as well, the panhandle development. Because I'm, I'm wondering, has there been a change of policy on the acreage buffering along the ALR in this area?
Madam mayor, when the applicant submitted the application for this site, we did ask for a concept to be developed or proposed for the remaining one acre properties, the one to the north and the two to the south. And panhandles were proposed for the two on either side, or the one on either side of the subject site. And so each of the proposed lots would be a half acre in size, and that is consistent with, with the policy of a maximum of two units per acre adjacent the agricultural land reserve. So the proposal is consistent with that policy.
So people buying behind there would have known that that was the policy, is that correct?
I, I don't know if they would know that policy.
But it has been in place for quite a long time.
It has been in place.
This is not a new policy.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Gill.
Thank you, madam mayor. Just a question to staff. Did staff look at alternative layouts as it relates to this site? I'm not quite sure if staff could give some context in terms of the panhandle concept being repeated anywhere else in this particular neighborhood. Do we have any trend that has happened to date in terms of having panhandle lots in this particular neighborhood or not? And question B is, have we looked at alternative layouts in terms of entire site, looking at land assembly?
Through you, madam Planner, I believe there's an existing house, which is, was the catalyst for that, but could you clarify?
Madam mayor, in the vicinity, I don't believe there are any panhandles. We did look at different options for subdivision, the only, well, the only other option would be small cul-de-sacs. And we, there really doesn't seem to be any benefit to have the panhandles changed into a cul-de-sac. So that's why the panhandle was considered acceptable.
So it's just, so in terms of doing any land assembly in that immediate neighborhood, would it make any sense for, for looking at alternative layouts as it relates to potential subdivision application as it relates to maybe three or four properties? If, if there is a land assembly of several of those properties in question in terms of where we're looking at panhandles in the individual lots, fronting 164 Street?
Madam mayor, we, you know, we can certainly look at alternatives. We, we would still require that they not exceed the two units per acre. And with the, the depth of lots, it would be difficult to achieve any other alternatives.
Okay councillor Gill. Councillor Hayes.
Thank you, madam mayor. At 50 meters, and through you to staff again, at 50 meters wide or 48 and a half meters wide, we're looking, I'm not good with meters, but there's 150 feet there. So, so splitting them in half is a 75-foot frontage. Now I realize that that's not as wide as the half acre lot would, would necessarily want to be, but is that less advantageous than panhandles when you put a house closer to the, arguably the rear lot line, if you will, of the neighbors, rather than doing a, rather than doing a split at 75 feet each lot and having the houses then situated more to the, to the center of, of the property line and creating a better buffer for the, for the rear neighbors? I'm not trying to redesign the project right now, I'm just wondering what thinking is of staff as far as typically panhandles versus doing just a, a straight split on the lots. I realize it creates double the number of driveways, but.
Comments, madam clerk?
Madam mayor, certainly, long, narrow, half acre lots could certainly be considered. They, they would require variance for the width, but the area would certainly be, would meet the RH zone.
Would that require the demolition of the existing home? In this particular application, is that not why that, that was considered? Would that require the demolition of that home?
Madam mayor, it would likely require the demolition, yes.
Okay. Councillor Starchuk.
Thank you, madam. Thank you, madam mayor. Just a question to the planner. One of the delegates had mentioned that previously that there were zoning propositions that came forward with the property to the north and to the two to the south. If in fact that is correct, what would be the reasons for their denial?
Madam mayor, the, the project to the north of the delegations, these are the, this is the, the cul-de-sac that we had delegations from this evening. The project that had neighborhood opposition was a former mushroom farm. And the initial application involved a proposal for all urban lots. And that, that had a reaction from the neighborhood of opposition. So the result was a combination of urban lots and suburban lots. So the suburban lots are about a third of an acre in size, and then the standard urban lots towards the west.
Madam, madam mayor, I would move the, of the proposal on this one, given the, the existing house, and that's why the panhandle is, is being proposed on this one. But I would, I would not be in favor of the other three going in a similar fashion with panhandles. I would, I would want to see a development variance permit on those, but I would be supportive of this one, one proposal.
Do I have a second or?
I'll support that, madam mayor. Becky.
All right, I'm going to call the question on that. All those in favor?
Madam mayor, if I could, could, could you have councillor Haye repeat the motion? I'm just a little bit confused.
He supports this particular application.
I'm supporting this particular motion, yes, but I wouldn't support others in that same role.
In order to sustain the existing home. Is that correct councillor Haye?
That's correct, madam mayor.
Let me ask a question on that to staff. Can, do you, do you know the age of the existing home and are they intending to keep that existing home? Or I just, I would like clarification on that, because if it's an older home really, which they're just thinking about rebuilding when they subdivide, I would, I'd have the same feeling that councillor Haye has about the other three properties. So if I could just get clarification on whether there really is an intention to hold this home because it's a recently built home, or, and they're staying in that, or if they're subdividing to sell the two properties?
Madam mayor, I know it's not a new home, and we're just trying to pull it up. I think it's screened by the. Think the vegetation might screen the, the view of the home.
I guess what I'm trying to clarify is if the intent is to build two new homes on that lot to sell once it's subdivided.
See if we can get a Google map of it.
I'm not sure that we can tell. I, I guess if it, the reason I'm asking the question is because I think that I agree with councillor Haye's position on the others, and would rather just see it consistent with this lot as well, if that's the intention, rather than putting a panhandle with two new homes on that lot and then subdividing the others in half. So I don't know if, if we could table it back to determine that information or not, because I'm.
It was written here. It's not shown here. Oh. Oh, it's an older house.
Oh, there it is on your screen. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, madam clerk.
Thank you.
That's, that's helpful. Councillor Woods.
Not the lot directly north of this, but the, the other couple of lots that are further Did you say that they're one-third acre lots?
One acre lots.
The one that's north of this lot here is a one acre lot, correct? Right. But the lot that's north, the lots that are north of that are not as large, correct?
Correct.
Right.
The subdivision to the north is one-third acre, as I understood.
Right. So the, just north of the blue line there, any idea as the width of that lot? Is that like? So it's 35. So if you split the 48, or if you know what I'm saying, if you split the 48, it wouldn't be as wide as those lots. Mad, yeah, madam mayor, I'm not going to support this panhandle process. I just think it's going to, especially if you're not going to go consistent with the other lots. I'm not going to support it.
Thank you for your comment. I'm going to call the question, seeing no other speakers. All those in favor, opposed? Two, three, four, five. That motion fails.
Should we send it back for discussion?
Councillor Gill.
Madam mayor, I could just make the motion to actually send this back to staff to give us some context in terms of how this and other adjacent properties could potentially be subdivided in the future, whether it's looking at an amalgamation or looking at any land assembly. I think it would be wise, and it would give us some context in terms of future anticipation of the properties to the north and the south, in terms of how they potentially could be developed in context to the comments from council today. So that, that would be my recommendation.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third reading on two, madam mayor.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third on three.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the development variance permit on three.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Number four.
Third on four.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Councillor Gill.
Madam mayor, move the third reading on five.
But I do have some comments to make.
All right, I'll get a second or first.
Second.
Put it on table, thank you. Councillor Gill.
Madam mayor, just to engineering staff, I know I did ask the delegation this, but I'm going to just, on error on the side of caution, will there be any net loss in parking as it relates to the site when you're looking at both the guest apron that we had in the previous application that was approved and, and the tandem parking? So just want a quick answer from staff. Is there going to be any net loss when you're adding both the tandem parking and the previous guest apron?
If we count the apron parking, yes, there is a net loss.
Okay. That was the question I was trying to get at earlier. Thank you.
Councillor Haye? Third, yes, councillor Haye.
Thank you, madam mayor. And through you to staff, this is a second or third or several times anyway, we've heard from, from this particular delegation and perhaps others as well, that they're, they don't seem to be getting the notifications from some of these. And I'd just like to ensure that our community associations, and we know who they all are, are, are over communicated with rather than perhaps under communicated with, and then, you know, because it's unfortunate that, that they feel, for whatever reason, that they're not getting those notifications. So if we could just sort of make a note to, to keep them in the loop as much as possible and electronically and so on, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Haye. I will, councillor Gill, did you want to add to your?
Yes, governor. I do understand that both the Transportation Committee and council itself is looking at a context to capping some of the tandem issues that we've had, given kind of the direction that the council has been moving in, in the past in terms of this issue as it relates to parking in this specific area of Surrey in Cloverdale. That certainly today, I'm just not of the opinion to be able to support the application as it stands. The zoning as it stands does permit three parking stalls per residence, two being tandem, one being the apron. So as for today, I'm not going to be able to support the, the application for tonight.
Thank you. I will call the question on number five.
On supporting it or not supporting it?
The, the motion on the floor is to support it. So all those in favor? All those opposed? That fails. So I don't need final reading. And then the.
Move final on six.
Development permit is out of order, and so final on six. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move final adoption on the 2015-2019 general operating financial plan.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move final adoption on the 2015-2019 road traffic safety operating financial plan.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move final adoption on the 2015-2019 sewer operating financial plan.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move final adoption on 2015-2019 drainage operational financial plan.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move final adoption of 2015-2019 solid waste operating financial plan.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. These are all on the financial plan.
So move final adoption on the water operating financial plan.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move final adoption on the district energy operating financial plan.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move final adoption on the parking authority.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move final adoption on the capital financial plan.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 16, move final adoption on the drainage parcel tax by law.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 17, move final adoption on district energy systems.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 18, move final adoption on the Surrey sanitary sewer regulation.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 19, move final adoption on the Surrey secondary suite by law.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move final adoption on the Surrey waterworks regulation and changes by law.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move final adoption on 21, which is the cultural and recreational parcel tax.
Second.
Recreational and culture parcel tax, I believe we changed that too last time.
Yes.
So with that, with that change, was there a second or?
With the amendment.
With the amendment. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Introduction bylaws?
Move introduction at first on 22. Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And move third. Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And I'll move introduction at first on 23. Second.
That's a sanitary sewer expansion. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And move third. Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And on the Highway and Traffic bylaw, I'll move first. Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move second. Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And move third. Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And the City of Surrey Vehicle For Hire bylaw, I'll move first. Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move second. Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
I move third. Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. And that's to increase the number of taxi cab licenses permitted in Surrey. Permit approvals, DVP?
I'll move 26 be approved. Second. The front yard, set back. No concerns.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Delegation requests.
Move delegation request for Jane Adams to CIC. Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And move delegation request Kathy James Tourism to CIC. Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And Michael Bouda, the interim executive director on regional transportation to CIC. Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Can I have a motion for the Sustainable Communities Conference?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Any notices of motion? Any other business? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.